Six thirty-one P M. Clark, would please call the roll?
Chair LeVere.
Present.
Vice Chair Eby.
Present.
Commissioner McCart. Commissioner Wolvin. Chair, we have quorum.
Thank you very much. If you'll all please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. If no objections, the agenda is approved. And item number four minutes to be approved, I'll call for a motion and a second for the minutes of the September eighteenth meeting.
I move to approve the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, meeting minutes of the Littleton Appeals and Adjustment Commission.
All second. And we will remember how to do this. One second. Please vote now.
The vote is for in favor. The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right. Item number five on our agenda is public comment. If you wish to address the board under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order. Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. A separate opportunity will be provided for comment for any public hearing. Please, each speaker is limited to three minutes. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. The board is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss comments or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. First on tonight is Candace Rutledge.
Hello, my name is Candace Rutledge, and I know this isn't the committee for this, but I'd like it on record with the city that I'm having difficulty interacting with Littleton PD, and I don't think that the DA is going to help me. So I need, after this meeting tonight, I'd appreciate it if someone would take the time to help me find a connection, if that's possible.
Ashley, would you be able to help her with that?
Yeah, I will.
Thank you. And second on our public comment statement is Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, Appeals and Adjustment Board. It's February, and it's about time that the boards and commissions all shift personnel. Whether this commission changes or not, because the formal announcements aren't made until March by City Council. I do like to try to say thank you to volunteers who serve on boards and commissions. It's a huge city. There should be more people engaged and involved in thanking you. So I feel just strongly that somebody should stand up and say thank you for your service. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Pam. It's much appreciated. Is there anyone that did not have a chance to sign up for open public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to item number seven, a public hearing. AAC Resolution Zero One, Twenty Twenty-Five, approving a variance to allow for a shift in the build-to-zone requirements from five feet to twenty-five feet maximum for the front setbacks for two commercial buildings proposed to be located at approximately seventy-seven fifty-five South Santa Fe Drive. Is there a staff presentation? Awesome. Please continue for us.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jesse Sheets. I'm a planner too in community development, working in the planning department. As Chair LeVere mentioned, this is a variance request for some commercial buildings in the Evergreen Development near Mineral and Santa Fe. Tonight in this presentation, you'll see the action that's been requested, the location details of this commercial development, the review criteria and analysis that staff conducted for the request, and staff's recommendation and various actions and alternatives that the commission can take. The variance request is to shift the build-to-zone requirement for two new commercial buildings in the CM Zone District. The build-to-frontage type allows for a maximum of five feet for the front setback, and the variance request is to shift this maximum front setback to twenty-five feet. This would accommodate an existing easement for utilities that is ten feet wide, located along the property line, and it would also accommodate the unique orientation and design of the proposed buildings and where to measure the setbacks from. These maps give you a better idea of the area we're talking about that's experiencing a lot of change. Mineral and Santa Fe will showcase this lifestyle block development that Evergreen has proposed, and it is CM zoning now, corridor mix, so we have been applying the CM Zone District code standards to this application. This slide has some information about the build-to-frontage and what that means within the code. There are two buildings, a north building and a south building, and the variance request is for the build-to-frontage type maximum setback. And to kind of explain what that is a little bit better, these shops are considered a build-to-frontage type within the code, and that kind of dictates where the orientation of the building should be, how close they should be to the street, things of that nature. So in this scenario, due to the utility easement and that the buildings are placed diagonally at an angle, it made it very difficult for the applicant to meet the requirements for the build-to-frontage type. The buildings will be situated on the corner of South Platt River Parkway and West Nichols Avenue. Those streets aren't existing yet. They're part of the big master development plan for Evergreen at this site. Some more detailed information on this slide. This shows the two proposed buildings set at a diagonal to each other. Where the buildings are proposed to be located, the north building would have a thirteen-foot, five-inch setback if we measured it from the corner of the building that is closest to the right-of-way. And the southern building would have a fourteen-foot, eight-inch setback if it was measured from the closest corner to the right-of-way. The curve of Nichols going into South Platt River Parkway does make this challenging to figure out where to measure the dimensions from, and that's part of the relief and request in this variance is to establish that the setbacks would be measured from those corners of the building that are closest to the right-of-way. In reviewing this application, we also have some additional processes that are ongoing concurrently for this development. There is a site plan review that is being conducted, as well as a plating process for this site as well. For the site plan to be approved, this variance had to be requested in order to accommodate the buildings in their current proposed location. So this variance is being sought out due to the fact that these buildings are proposed to be located at an angle instead of perpendicular to each other, and with the easement, utility easement running along the property and the curve in the street, and not having a definitive guideline in the code on where to measure a setback from a building of this nature. Notification was sent out for this proposal. Signs have been posted at the location, seventy-seven fifty-five South Santa Fe Drive, and those owning or living on property within seven hundred feet of this proposed development have been notified of this hearing. After staff reviewed all of the information provided and the various site plan submittals and the survey that was provided, it's planning staff's opinion that this request meets the criteria within the code. And staff is recommending approval of AAC Resolution Zero One, Two Zero Two Five. The commission can choose to approve the proposal, approve it with some conditions, deny the proposal, or continue to a date certain in the future. Thank you very much, and if you have questions, feel free to ask.
Thank you, Jesse. Any questions for the city planner from commission?
Yeah, can we go back to one of the nice images of the, there we go. Just one that shows the top-down view? All right, so just to make sure I'm following the situation here, so we have the build-to requirement, which means it has to be up to this line and a certain distance from it, right? This, whatever this build-to line means, right?
Build-to zone is an area where the building could be placed anywhere within that zone, and then the build-to line is the delineation of where that zone begins. So the building would have to be placed, in theory, if this were a typical development, between zero and five feet, really close to the right-of-way and to the curb.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so like if it was a straight line, then there would be five feet from the sidewalk, or if that's where the line was, right? Okay, all right. So, and then the reason why this is such an interesting or different situation, I guess, so how was the, the shape of the roundabout, if I'm using that term right? Where was that defined at?
The shape of the roundabout and the associated right-of-way was a project that the city has worked on with the developer, but it's a city project to be installed.
So, so the city defined that, and then the Evergreen is then reacting to that as they decide what buildings they want to build where, right? And then, then the utility easement, can you explain which process defined what, how that was drawn?
Yeah, so oftentimes, and the, the developer who's here in attendance and has a, a presentation may be better able to answer this than, than I am, but oftentimes here lately, we've seen a lot of perimeter easement requests from the utility companies. So we've been working with them on how best to manage utilities along sections that would therefore comply with the code. I think the challenge here was there's a lot going on on the right-of-way already with the cycle track and a couple other amenities there, and the utilities need to be located further into the property.
Okay. Yeah, I'm just mainly trying to understand like the order of operations, how each of these lines were drawn. So then, so if I could try to weave together a coherent story, then the city was deciding where this Nichols roundabout was going to go. So that was the first line drawn, and Evergreen comes on and says, well, we think this is probably where the utilities are going to want to work, so that's where that line was drawn. And then, and then the build-to line then, since this is a weird set of situations where there's different curves, so that's why it's not, that's why it's difficult to define, and that's kind of the source of why we're here tonight, right? Am I?
That's correct.
Did I kind of summarize it? Okay. And then, what's the distance between that easement? Is the, is there, is the solid red line with the, is that what we're calling the build-to line, or is that the, is that just the easement?
The, the solid red line, or the, I guess it's not quite solid, but the, the more, the darker, more defined red line?
The more solid one, yeah.
That is actually the property line. The hashed area then is the proposed, or is the utility easement, not proposed, it's there, the utility easement. So that's, you see the fourteen-point-eight feet, so ten foot of that is the utility easement. And the same is true up in the other corner, the thirteen-point-five feet, ten foot of that is utility easement.
Okay, so then it's twenty-five feet from the corner of the shop south building to the edge of the cycle truck? I'm just trying to understand where that twenty-five feet number is coming from.
I can speak to that. The twenty-five-foot number was proposed to offer a little bit of wiggle room in case some unexpected design challenges came up, if there were some new requirements, undergoing review of the site plan for the site, if different accommodations needed to be made to shift the dumpster area or where to put the bike racks, pedestrian connectivity to the cycle track and the sidewalk that rings the perimeter of the site. So that is a request just to have a little bit more room in case things need to shift without having to make an additional request if that were the case. But currently, they are proposed to be thirteen feet, five inches, and fourteen feet, eight inches away from the property line, measured from those corners. So coming in from that easement, one would be three feet, five inches away from the area where they could build, and the other would be four feet, eight inches. So the twenty-five-foot isn't a measurement that exists or lives in these documents. It's just a request to have a little bit of wiggle room and grace in case things need to shift during the site plan process.
Okay, okay, thanks. Sorry, I was just trying to follow the train of logic here. All right, thanks.
Jesse, what's the purpose of having a five-foot build-to line? Because my initial reaction was kind of like this, it would make sense to actually have it further back from the property line, and I thought five feet was very close.
This frontage type that these commercial buildings fit into, the most closely aligned frontage type was the build-to frontage with what they were proposing. And the build-to frontage is for commercial structures, and the idea is to put them as close to the street as possible to provide that pedestrian interactivity when people are walking by. And that is a big part of this development is to increase pedestrian activity and the bicycle amenities, the proximity to the light rail station just being across the street. So these, I think, is there another image maybe on the other one? That's a little hard to see because it's small, but yeah, the idea with the build-to frontage is to place the businesses, the commercial buildings, as close to the street as possible to give it more of a Main Street feel, you know, just to have things closer to the pedestrians that would be walking by rather than designing something that's car-focused.
Okay, because the signage is actually going to face Nichols. It's not going to, if you, if you'd be on Nichols, you wouldn't be looking at the back of the building, it sounds like, from what you're describing.
If you were on Nichols, you would be looking at the rear of the south building.
Okay.
That was a challenge too, was defining where the front of these buildings were. After many meetings and talks, we determined that the best scenario would be to consider the front of these two buildings, where those corners are being measured from. So one is on South Platt River Parkway, and the other one is on the curve on the bend. So we determined collectively that the front of the buildings should be those two narrower ends of the building that face South Platt River Parkway. Because the buildings face each other internally, you can't really measure front setbacks from two buildings that are on the same parcel.
And for reference, there's another image in our packet that has multiple pads all the way through F. None of the other pads would require this adjustment, this variance.
No other variances are being requested for these pads on this site. That's why the zoomed-in, only this parcel is being highlighted. The other pads should not require any variances that we know of at the moment.
And then pad A between the two buildings, because that's between the two buildings, that's not contemplated for development at this time and probably will remain open space?
The label pad A is merely placed in between the two buildings. It's not designating that triangular portion between the two. It's the entire parcel is pad A.
Any other questions from commission?
Well, the only other question I had was kind of on the relationship of this request to the site plan review, which I believe that would be approved by the planning commission, correct, right?
The site plan review would not.
That's administrative, that's, okay. Oh, all right, that answers my question. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Steph. At this time, we'll hear from applicant.
All right.
If you could just introduce yourself before you begin, that'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely. Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Chair and Chair. I just want to thank you first for taking the time to hear our variance requests tonight. My name is Jennifer Roldan, and I am the Development Manager for Evergreen Development Company for this particular project. Evergreen is both the owner and the applicant for tonight's variance request, so my presentation is going to be a little bit repetitive of what Jesse's already presented to you, but I can just dive in. But before I start my presentation, I do want to give a little bit of background on Evergreen. I'm not sure if you're familiar with us for any of the other phases of the projects that have been going through approval for River Park. But Evergreen has been in business for over fifty years. We specialize in high-quality, thoughtfully designed neighborhood retail and multifamily development, and we are a relatively small company. We have less than a hundred employees, but we've successfully developed about six hundred projects primarily in southwestern region of the U.S., and many of those projects are here in the city of Littleton and also within the greater Denver metro area. So thank you for having me tonight. As Jesse mentioned earlier, we're focusing on the lifestyle block, which is highlighted in green. This quadrant is approximately six acres and is across the street from the RTD Light Rail Station. The lifestyle block will provide a walkable, pedestrian-friendly restaurants, boutiques, shops, fitness, and beauty services, and it's all centered around a community plaza. So that's going to be that open space that you saw the pad A label in. Our request tonight is to increase the maximum setback required for CM zoning within the assigned shop front, frontage. The increased setback is to change it from the maximum five-foot setback to the twenty-five-foot setback, as you heard earlier. And our main reason for requesting this is because of the existing ten-foot utility easement along the corner frontage of the proposed project. So the shop front, frontage requirements, as described in the ULUC, is essentially buildings that are having narrow front setback from the lot line with a yard separating the building and abutting the street right-of-way. As you can see, it's illustrated in the ULUC. I apologize because I think I highlighted the wrong one. It's supposed to be a corner lot, but it's the same setbacks. It's the zero minimum setback, maximum five-foot setback. So, on this slide is the proposed project. As mentioned before, our proposed project does front South Platte River Parkway and Nichols Avenue, so those green lines kind of just highlight our frontage streets. These are the corners, as Jesse mentioned earlier, that we are planning to measure the front setbacks from. So we're doing this in an effort to be able to place the buildings as close as possible to the right-of-way, in order to meet the original intent of that street front, frontage. And as Jesse showed in his presentation, these are the proposed setbacks. As you can see, from that corner, on the north shops building, it's about 13 feet, 5 inches, and then from the corner on the south shops building, it's 14 feet, 8 inches. So as a part of this variance request, we are required to prove that we meet the review criteria of the variance, so there are six review criteria. I will not read all of those out loud, but, the first criteria is a strict application of the provisions of the code would impose an undue hardship on the applicant, and deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other residents of the district in which the property is located. We do believe that a strict application of that 5-foot maximum setback imposes an undue hardship on this particular project. As mentioned before, there is that 10-foot existing utility easement along our frontages that can't be relocated or vacated, so the strict application of the maximum setback would not allow Evergreen to move forward with the two proposed buildings, or really any buildings along South Platte River Parkway and Nichols, because of that maximum 5-foot distance. Criteria B, the hardship is based on results from a particular, a particular physical surrounding shape or topographical conditions of the subject property. Yes, we do believe the hardship is due to the location as a corner lot, the existing 10-foot utility easement, and the varied width and nature of the future rights-of-way that surround the proposed project. Criteria C, the hardship under which the variance is sought was not created by the owner, occupant, or agent of the owner of the property in question. So, as discussed earlier in kind of the sequencing of events, the 10-foot utility easement was placed prior to our formal site plan submission of the proposed development in the lifestyle block. It was also in place prior to the assignment of the frontage type by planning staff. So unfortunately, because of the sequence of events, Evergreen can't, cannot meet the requirement of the assigned shop front, frontage, which requires that Build 2 zone of 0-foot minimum setback and 5-foot maximum setback. Criteria D, the variance requested is the minimum necessary that will make a possible permitted use of the land, building, or structure. Yes, we do believe that the requested 25-foot setback is the minimum necessary, based on the conditions of the corner and the meandering multi-use pass that is adjacent to the property line, and of course, the variable width sidewalks and the existing utility easement, as mentioned prior. I do want to mention that the site plans, as Jesse had mentioned earlier as well, are in review, and so they may require adjustments based on review comments that come in from planning staff as the, as the process continues. Criteria E, a variance, I will not confer on the applicant any special privilege that is denied to other lands or structures in the same district. We don't believe any special privilege will be conferred upon us with the approval of the requested variance. The variance runs with the land in Block 1, so it will just merely allow the development within Block 1 to have relief from that maximum 5-foot setback. And the last criteria is, the variance will not adversely affect public health, safety, and welfare, and we don't believe that the, excuse me, we don't believe if approved that the requested variance will have any impact on the public health, safety, and welfare. So, in conclusion, I believe that our request to adjust the maximum setback from 5 feet to 25 feet is a reasonable request, based on the conditions that are kind of out of Evergreen's control at the moment, which include that existing 10-foot utility easement along our frontages, the parcel being a corner lot, and the variable widths and nature of the adjacent future right-of-ways to be constructed. So, I hope that the board agrees with me and will consider approval for our variance request. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from Commission for the applicant?
So I have a question, behind the buildings, there's dark gray lines, are those roads or walkways? What are the, the dark gray?
Yeah, those are some proposed pedestrian connections, so they're going to be sidewalks, essentially connecting these future pads to each other, so that pedestrians can move safely across the site without any sort of audio, auto interactions.
Okay, so it would look to me that you would prefer probably not to move that back 25 feet completely, because it, all that would have to be redesigned if your building did go back 25 feet, instead of the 14 that you're proposing right now.
Right. That 25 feet is just a cushion, basically, if, if there is a comment that comes back during our building review, that we do need to scoot them back, then, then we can do so without having to come back for an additional variance request.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the public hearing at 7:04 PM. Is anyone signed up? We do have two people signed up. Start with Jen, is, you're Jen? And then we'll go with Pam Chadbourne.
Yes, I'm Pam Chadbourne, I live Block 1 half from here, so, so, with, I'm not sure what the scope of this board is, in terms of the context of my concerns. Within what's described, I would agree with the staff recommendation. You have an option for conditions, and for example, one could be to build over the utility easement, and that would be unsafe and against public health, it would violate the criteria, so I, I don't think those kinds of things are appropriate for consideration. And it does seem to meet criteria, again, within the bounds of this description. But I do not understand why this occurred. I dislike the Unified Land Use Code, and I believe it has many fundamental flaws and errors. One of them in this case is the site triangle. And, yeah, our old code had a site triangle, I believe it was something like 30 feet, and from either direction approaching an intersection, you needed to have an obstructed vision around that corner, and you know who it protects, is pedestrians and bicyclists, and people in wheelchairs, as well as cars coming into that intersection. That's what the site, it's not a S-I-T-E, it's S-I-G-H-T. You know, I listened to City Council just last night spend, like, an hour talking about safer streets, and part of it is visibility at corners and intersections, and we don't even want to have people parking near there. But instead, we have buildings within 5 feet, maybe, you know, 14, 15 feet of this corner, and then who knows how many other buildings are around this. This is a terrible design in terms of safety for transit pedestrians, people in wheelchairs, bicyclists, and people in cars approaching this, or going around the roundabout, because it obstructs the view. In fact, you can see that they kind of heaped up on the corner, two corners, two stories high, with these sloped roofs and stuff like that, which totally obscure the view of the intersection. Besides that, there is the issue of, I'm just going to say, in urban design, it's more attractive on a corner or a roundabout to have lower buildings on the corner, so everybody can see in that space. And then as you go down the street, there's higher buildings in the middle of the block, and then you get to the corners, and they should be lower again. That would be good urban design. So for me, the fundamental underlying design here is bad. It is dangerous. It is worse than our old code, which is one of my problems. If I were up there, what would I do? I guess I would ask about continuing to date certain with an answer to the safety issue of this design, but it's up to you. Good luck, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else need a chance to make comment?
I just wanted to say that I had an idea, that you could probably plane those corners off, and then slope that roof to a degree where you could make all of that work, but give a lot of room for visibility, so.
Thank you, Candace. All right, if there's no one else, we'll close the public hearing at 7:09. Discussion among the staff, or Commissioners' motion?
The only, the only criteria that I'm doubting is the minimum necessary, because it seemed to be based on a lot of uncertainty. And, and it's the Order of Operations that kind of gives me that pause, and kind of how we got to this situation, so, it seems like the number was decided based on, the 25-foot number, was decided based on an understanding of, well, we don't really know what's going to happen, so we're just going to ask for some margin. And margin, to me, by definition, is more than what is necessary, unless we're talking about, you know, like, structural engineering, where you're putting in like a margin of safety, for various reasons, right? So, that's the only criteria that I'm really struggling with, I mean, it's really straightforward on all the other criteria, there's, but, otherwise, I, I think this is a very easy decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm agreeing with you on both of those points, I don't know if 25 is correct, in, in fact, if we approve 25, it runs with the land, it runs with the property for all time, so, in 50 years, someone can build by right with a 25-foot setback. I agree with your statement on, on margin being, so, maybe, maybe 25 is not the right number, maybe the different condition we might approve would be fewer feet, you know, if it's 20, if it's pegged different to the utility easement versus... But, Jesse, if you can help me understand, we pick the Build 2 line because it's visible and easy to understand, and maybe the, a utility, underground utility would be harder to distinguish what that Build 2 line would be. Because if we're, if we're saying it's 5 feet from the sidewalk, from 0 to 5 feet to the sidewalk, we can, we can see where that sidewalk is. Now, if City comes and moves that sidewalk in the future, maybe makes it wavy, makes it interesting, puts it over top the utility, that changes a lot of things.
In this scenario, it's measured from the property line, there is a cycle track and pedestrian connectivity and sidewalks that ring the entire site, so all of the sidewalks and the bicycle track are located off of the property line and city right-of-way?
I think also, if I may, to answer your, your question, I think either line is acceptable, the, the code talks about the Build 2 as being from the property line, however, if you wanted to, you know, prove this with a condition or something, you know, place that on, you could indicate, you know, Build 2 line be taken from, you know, property line at X number of feet that you feel is acceptable, as the maximum amount, or from, you know, it, you could still reference the utility line, because the utility line is, the utility easement line is still something that is surveyable, you know, it's, it's something that will be identified on a, a site plan.
And is there a reason we don't modify for a limited period of time, you know, we approve this 25-foot setback for two years, and then it reverts?
There we go. The only challenge with that is, if it reverted before any, you know, potential redevelopment, et cetera, then we would be creating an unconforming lot at that two-year mark, and that's the, the primary rationale there. You know, staff was amenable to a, a little bit of grace, we might have gone a little too far, and we understand that, that the maximum amount might, that the council or the commission might feel is appropriate, could be at somewhat of a lesser degree.
The only other question I have is just trying to understand the intent of the CM kind of storefront, because when I first looked at this, when I hear a 5-foot Build 2 line, I am literally imagining Main Street, right, just like both of you said, so, but we're not really talking about that here, we're talking about where garbage cans and stuff are going to go behind some fence, maybe, I don't know, I'm making that up, but the point is, it's not the front of the store, there's not going to be windows, there's not going to be doors, on the longest side of the South Shop building, and the longest side of the Shop North building facing the road, right? I know that's outside of the scope of the discussion right now, but it, was that the intent of the Build 2 line, was to encourage storefronts to actually face the road?
Yeah, if I may, there are certain scenarios where that storefront really plays, really works out well. One of the examples that we have that's under construction right now is Amly, and the, the difference there is, and, and I am in agreement that, that this section of the code has a lot of great aspirational items, but in real-world practicality, if we are seeing more of these utility easements, then we may need to look at the code. But that Amly building is, does have, is able to comply, but a lot of those utilities are in, in that shared drive, which actually is a private drive, the Village, oh man, Littleton Village, Village Park Drive, I believe it is, that's a, a shared drive, but those stores are able to front onto that. So, in certain scenarios, it works out really well, and others, we may need to have more flexibility in the future code.
I know I've already asked this question, and I'm sorry, I didn't, I don't think I really understood it, who decides where the utility easement goes?
So it's, the city works in collaboration with the utility companies, and oftentimes, the utility companies require perimeter easements. So, in the Amly case, they did not require that perimeter easement, because it was able to be within that private drive, utilities were able to be there. In this case, they're requiring a 10-foot utility easement. The city tries to work with them, as, as does, as do developers, and sometimes are successful at maneuvering utility easements to interior of the site, and other times not.
Okay. All right, I follow.
Yeah, I would ju, I would just add, kind of on the minimum necessary with the 25 feet, you know, that it, it does seem like the intent of the codes met here with the storefronts being, you know, well within 5 feet from the end of the easement line, and I think I would really just be prone to trust staff regarding kind of the, the shape of the lot, the size of the buildings, and the complexities of finalizing the plan and... And, you know, maybe not say that those extra 10 feet go beyond what's minimum necessary. That's just kind of how I would view that element of the criteria.
Yeah, if we're looking at the top-down view again, you know, at certain points, you know, one corner is 35 feet from that build-to line. You know, it just depends because of the unnatural shape of the, the roundabout, the curve of the road, right? Where there's a lot of variation there. You know, I, I think this is where something that would have been designed and built with a master plan, now we're using ULUC and taking downtown streets logic and applying it to something that's more community-oriented than, than what we've seen. So I could go either way on, on the proposed minimum setback. Yeah, so if there's a motion someone wants to make?
Can we go back to one of the top-down photos that has all the measurements on it?
Have to switch over to staff's computer.
Does this view have the measurements you wanted to see?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, yeah, I mean, I think, I don't really have any issues with the way things have been laid down except for the minimum necessary. You know, I mean, I, I do have a, I don't have any worry about staff or Evergreen doing something nefarious or undesirable with a 25-foot number. But it's more just thinking about it from the terms of not approving more than we have to. So I would make a motion to just make it 15 feet. It's a couple of inches more than what I'm seeing to be the closest distance or the furthest distance, that 14.8. And just call it there as the minimum necessary. But yeah, that's how I would, that's how I would like to think about it. I mean, I have no issue, I mean, I intend for this to, to approve some sort of variance tonight, for sure, so.
And you're, you're okay with the measurement being from any given point closest to any?
Yeah, if I understand that 14.8 number correctly, that is the shortest distance to the property, to the, to the property line, is that correct? Yeah, so then, so it would still be within the, so the motion would be then be 15 feet from the, from the property line, if I'm understanding that correctly.
And if I may, if that's your intention, if you're doing a motion, there is the proposed motion that's in the handout that you have. If you are going to move for that, then what you would do is read that as it is. But instead of saying five feet to 25 feet maximum, you would be moving for five feet to 15 feet maximum. And then the rest of that proposed motion does have that measurement language in it.
Should we just get the initial motion on the table and we can?
Sounds good.
Kind of make amendments from there. So, yeah, so I propose a motion and move to approve AAC Resolution 01-2025, approving a variance to allow for a shift to the build-to zone requirements from five feet to 25 feet maximum for the front setbacks for two commercial buildings measured from the right-of-way to the closest corner of the building proposed to be located at 7755 South Santa Fe Drive.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, where is the right-of-way line on here?
The property line is the darker bold red.
So it's 25 feet from the property line and the right-of-way is the same thing? Okay.
Yes.
I'll second the motion. And just, we're, we're good on, our motion says front setbacks. And we've, you know, staff has indicated it might be corner lots. There's no issue there. Okay.
No, no issue with that.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. A second. Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Let me just tee it up here. All right, voting is open.
Pardon me, the vote is four in favor the motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Sorry we couldn't go for the full 25 feet, but hopefully that will sustain.
So the motion, as you just voted on, was for the 25 feet.
Did you? Oh.
And then from that point, there can be an amendment put on that motion to reduce?
The attorney said we could, we should say, to modify it.
And then you would have had to have a motion to amend if you were moving to amend it? That was not the intention, it sounds like.
I don't, there's no such thing as a go-back, right?
Somebody would have to move to strike the last motion and vote?
I'd like to move that we strike the last motion.
And then the person who motioned has to agree?
Yeah, I absolutely agree. I want to make sure we're all voting on the same thing.
So this is for or against the motion to strike? The voting is open. Four will strike the passed motion.
The vote to strike is four in favor the motion carries.
Okay, so you can do the original motion again with 25 if you want to. Vote on that. And then if you're wanting to amend to 15, you do, need to do a motion to amend. Does that make sense? And then you'll vote on the motion to amend.
And, and why is it we have to amend the proposed motion when we, we can't propose our own motion?
You can't. That's what I told him initially, that you can do that. The difference is if you are voting on just the amendment, that could fail and you're back to the original motion. Whereas the alternative in just proposing your own motion, that's the only thing you're voting on. If that makes sense.
Right, but.
So it is up to you how you want to do that. You could do it either way.
But if we were, just sorry about the process. If we were doing a temperature, temperature check and we were all feeling, oh, 15 is probably the right thing to do, we could put 15 on the table, someone could vote, move to amend to 25 feet.
Yeah, you could. That's right.
And then we would be voting on that separate and then we'd be right back to where, so.
Yep, so just, it's up to whoever is moving. Do you want to move as proposed at 25 feet? Or are you moving separately as 15 and you could amend either way?
Yep. I apologize for ruining your motion. It was so, I just didn't pay attention to that.
It's a beautiful motion, but yeah, either way, we would like to proceed. Should I put the initial on the?
Put the initial on. However you like it, we'll, we'll go from there.
Sounds good, so. I will move to approve AAC Resolution 01-2025, approving a variance to allow for a shift to the build-to zone requirements from five feet to 25 feet maximum for the front setbacks for two commercial buildings measured from the right-of-way to the closest corner of the building proposed to be located approximately 7755 South Santa Fe Drive.
So then you would, yeah, you'd need a second on that. And then you can discuss as is, or someone could move to amend if that is what your intention is.
All right, let's just discuss in temperature check. I, I think over here, you and I, maybe on the 15, is there room for that over there?
Well, that's why I even asked the question about, you know, how that would affect the rest of the property. It seems like they're going to want to go with that, the shortest distance they can and still build the building. So I think even a little bit of leeway going to the 15 is fine because I don't think their intent is to go back that 20 or 25 feet.
Yeah, and that's.
Changes everything.
And that's kind of where my head is. Also is that, you know, they, they lost 10 feet to that easement. The five-feet build-to on top of that 10 feet is that 15 feet. So that, that's where I'm leaning to as well, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would rather see us push back as a city against the utilities if we, you know, if we actually need that space, right? But staff at least, but yeah, I mean, just because of the, it's the uncertainty around the process is where I'm getting hung up on minimum necessary and why I would like to approve 15.
And, yeah, I think, you know, I might differ a little bit in finding the initial requested 25 feet to be the minimum necessary. And I think, as I'd stated, kind of due to some uncertainties of the lot shape, the size of the buildings, the plan to be approved. I'm kind of looking at, you know, the map here and I'm kind of thinking like a child's building block puzzle. And, you know, as I shift the size of those buildings, essentially one corner is reduced in size and it automatically sort of adds additional length to another setback. So I do think there's some real challenges and I'm just going to trust staff there with that, you know, that extra 10 feet of leeway.
I'll put it out there, see if we get it. I move to amend the motion.
Somebody has to second the original motion.
Oh, we haven't.
Oh, I did.
You did.
You did?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Which is why I'm doing what I'm doing. It's okay, we're all off our game.
I did not hear that.
I'm going to move to amend the motion to shift the build-to zone requirements to five, to five feet to 15 feet, striking the proposed 25 feet in the, in the original motion.
So to clarify, it is a motion to amend to change the maximum of 25 feet to 15 feet.
Correct. Thank you for the clarity.
Second.
All right, we will proceed to vote. Any more discussion is fine. The most, the first vote here will be on the amendment reducing from 25 feet to 15 feet. Voting is open.
The vote is three in favor with Chair, with Vice Chair E.B. voting no. The motion carries.
All right. The motion is now amended. We will proceed to vote on the amended motion. Any further discussion? Okay, voting is open.
The vote is three in favor with Vice Chair E.B. voting no. The motion carries as amended.
Thank you all for your patience through that process. Congratulations, you are approved. Sorry. Now, I'm sorry that we've taken some of the wiggle room out of it. Next item on our agenda, comments, reports from staff. Anything to note?
I have no updates at this time. Thank you.
Okay. City Clerk?
There will be no meeting March 19th. There will be a training in April and I will email you all with the training dates and all the info you need. And also, just to let you know, Wiley Smith moved out of Littleton, so he resigned from the board, so there was another opening. And so we'll have a new person. And congratulations, Tim, for being reappointed.
Thank you very much. Will we still sit and hold the meeting in April?
Yes, we will. Even if there's no business, it'll still be a transitional meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Anything from commissioners? Seeing none, we are adjourned at 7:33 PM.